Welcome to the Board of Education's September 14, 2022 Regular Session Meeting. Please stand as we observe a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Ms. Horn.
Face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Horn. Board members, just a reminder that the Tennessee School Board Association's Fall District East Meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, September 27 at Jefferson County High School, starting at 4:30 PM. If you would like to attend and have not already registered, please let Terry know if you can attend as soon as possible. Also, you received an email communication from Dr. Roswick about the captions on Items 7B and 7C for contracts with Cope Associates for the addition to HVA and Lewis, wait, is that right? Or is it Cope with Sturkey? Okay, and Lewis Group for Sturkey, okay. The captions were updated to clarify that these contracts and costs are for the design process for these projects. Additionally, as Superintendent Roswick explained, we agreed to the addition of Item 7E, which is a contract with Instructure for provision of the Mastery Connect Site License for a Benchmark Assessment Tool. Due to the tight timeline to get this contract in place, the Executive Committee agreed to the addition, and the Board may certainly have discussion and ask questions when that item is read. I can tell you that this, a lot of discussion was happening last week about this, and a lot of work went into making this happen tonight by a lot of different departments, I believe, so I was actually happy to see that added. Also, Mr. Watson questioned whether the cost listed on Item 7A regarding contracts for foreign language interpretation services was for one contract or for both of the contracts with the listed vendors. To clarify, the amount was changed to up to $200,000, since the previous amount listed applied to only one. The fiscal note on that item was also updated to reflect the clarification. All right, so are there any requested changes to the agenda?
We move to approve.
So, motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Mr. Watson, all in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. All right, and just a reminder to the public, the Board did have a discussion on this agenda on Monday, so sometimes it seems like we're moving quickly through it at our regular meetings, but typically that's because we have already discussed it earlier in the week. Ms. Coate?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item 5, Consent Agenda.
So, motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Ms. Horn, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 6A, approve addendum to Tennessee Department of Education SRR 3.0 Plan.
So, motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Ms. Henderson, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 6B, approve Tennessee Department of Education Extended Learning Programs 21st Century Community Learning Centers grant in the amount of $323,989 for the term of July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023, and fiscal year 2022 carryover funding in the amount of $119,937.64 for after-school programming at Chris and Berry Elementary School and Pond Gap Elementary School.
And a motion by, a second by Ms. Horn, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 6C, approve grant contact with the Tennessee Department of Human Services and receipt of grant funding in the amount of $368,196.50 for pre-employment transition services school-to-work program to benefit students with disabilities for the term of October 1, 2022 through September 30, 2024.
Motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Mr. Watson, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 6D, approve memorandum of understanding with Knox County Health Department and receipt of funding up to $519,711 for the in-school health program for the term of July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023.
Motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Mr. Watson, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 6E, approve memorandum of understanding with Knox Education Foundation and receipt of an Elevate Program Operations Grant in the amount of $60,390.36 for the benefit of students in recovery from substance abuse for the term of July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023.
So, we have a motion by Reverend Butler, what did you, second by Mr. Watson? Second by Mr. Watson, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 6F, approve grant agreement with Rockefeller Philanthropy Advisors, Incorporated, and receipt of grant in the amount of $30,000 for the term of August 1, 2022 through August 31, 2023.
So, motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Ms. Owen, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 6G, approve Tanger Outlets Tanger Kids Grants for Central High School in the amount of $2,284, Gap Creek Elementary School in the amount of $170, and Karnes Middle School in the amount of $867.
So, motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Ms. Henderson, all in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 7A, approve contracts with Foreign Language Academy and Velocia Language Network, Incorporated, for provision of foreign language interpretation services up to $200,000 annually for the term of November 1, 2022 through October 31, 2023, which may be extended for four additional years.
Motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Ms. Owen, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 7B, approve design contract with Cope Associates, Incorporated, in the amount of $732,000 for addition to Harden Valley Academy using capital improvement plan funds.
A motion by Ms. Henderson, a second by Ms. Horn, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 7C, approve design contract with Lewis Group Architects, Incorporated, in the amount of $1180,000 for addition and renovations to Sturkey Elementary School using capital improvement plan funds.
Motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Mr. Watson, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 7D, approve memorandum of understanding with Graphic Creations, Incorporated, for Knox County Schools Online Employee Store Pilot through June 30, 2023.
Motion by Reverend Butler, a second by Ms. Horn, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 7E, approve amendment to Contract Number 21383 with Instructure, Incorporated, formerly known as Certica Solutions, Incorporated, for a customized benchmark assessment program, Mastery Connect, for the term of September 16, 2022 through September 15, 2023, at a cost of $931,250 using SRR 3.0 grant funds.
Motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Ms. Horn, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 8A, approve fiscal year 2022 year-end budget adjustment in the amount of $8,064,668.
Motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Ms. Henderson, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 8B, approve Central Cafeteria Fund fiscal year 2022 year-end budget adjustment in the amount of $880,000.
So, motion by Ms. Horn, a second by Mr. Watson, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries.
8C, approve appointment of the Knox County Board of Education Collaborative Conferencing Management Team.
So, motion by Ms. Owen, a second by Mr. McMillan, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 8D, reorganization of the Board for 2022 through 2023.
So, a motion by Mr. Watson, a second by Ms. Henderson, do we, so, here you might have to help me out with this, this only happens once a year, so we need to do nominations for chair first, right?
Yes, yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So, so yes, the first step would be for a chairperson, and any board member can make a nomination. Each nomination has to have a second, and then when the nominations are closed with seconds, then, then the voting would begin at that point. And then after chair is voted on, then you move on to vice chair with the same process.
All right, Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to nominate Ms. Christie as chair for this, this new year.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Horn and a second by Mr. Watson, and thank you for your confidence. Do we have any other nominations? Second? So, we have a motion by Mr. McMillan, a second by Ms. Horn, to elect by acclamation, so all in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so, moving on to vice chair, nominations, Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to nominate Betsy Henderson for vice chair for the new year.
I'd like a second.
So, a nomination by Ms. Horn, second by Mr. Triplet, Ms. Bike?
I would like to nominate Mr. Watson for vice chair, please.
Second.
So, and a nomination by Ms. Bike and a second by Reverend Butler for Mr. Watson. So, we do, we do roll call. Well, do you, well, I guess, do you both accept those nominations, I guess? Are, are you both willing to serve? Okay. Do we have any other nominations? Okay, seeing none, so, just voice call, so, roll call vote on names, so, Ms. Coate?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and when I call your name, if you will give me the last name of the person that you are voting for, for vice chair. Reverend Butler?
Watson.
Ms. Owen? Mr. Watson?
Watson.
Ms. Bike?
Watson.
Ms. Horn?
Henderson.
Ms. Henderson?
Henderson.
Mr. Triplet?
Henderson.
Mr. McMillan? And Ms. Christie?
Henderson.
That's four votes for Mr. Watson and five votes for Ms. Henderson. Congratulations, Ms. Henderson. And so, that concludes our regular agenda. Do we have public forum, Ms. Coate?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have one speaker for public forum. Robert Cole. And Mr. Cole, if you'll come to the podium and state your name and county of residence for the record, and you'll have up to three minutes.
My name is Robert Cole, and I am a Knox County resident. I'm here today due to a incident that happened on the half-day, which was that my child's school, and I understand the majority of other Knox County schools, were served sack lunch peanut butter sandwiches. I, to be clear, am not advocating for banning of peanuts in schools, but per the guidance that was sent out for peanut products in school cafeterias earlier this year, it discusses that some various things that you need to do in developing plans and that sort of thing. And we actually had worked out a very good plan, I thought, with the school, with my child's teacher, Mr. Eric Moore, is a fantastic advocate for my son, who has a severe peanut allergy. And that plan seemed to be working quite well for the first week and a half, and once we got to the first half-day, I got a bit of a panicked call from Mr. Moore that he did not realize until day of that they were serving peanut butter sandwiches and that they were being distributed to the classrooms to be eaten. I did a bit of an informal poll on Facebook with some various parent groups, and it sounded like the majority of other schools had done the same. Some select schools, at least five, had served soy butter sandwiches that day. So, I, I think that's a reasonable thing to do, I think it's reasonable to be able to make accommodations. I want to also spend a moment backing up slightly to when we realized my son had a peanut allergy. He was less than a year old, and I got a call while I was at work from my wife's phone that no parent wants to get, which is that it was one of my wife's friends calling to let me know that my son was being sent to Children's Hospital in an ambulance. He had somehow ingested peanuts at a friend's house on a playdate. And luckily for him, he was about seven months old, we had EpiPens, we had realized a couple of months prior that he had a peanut allergy due to my daughter taking a picture with him, and she'd been eating peanuts, and he ended up with an imprint of her hand on his arm. And when I got to the emergency room, the emergency room doctor told me something that really just has sat with me since then, which was that my wife wins Mom of the Year Award, because normally when children come to the emergency room at his age, it doesn't end this way. Because she was able to administer an EpiPen, she was able to get him to the hospital in an ambulance, and they were able to do all the things that they needed to do. So, I'm not here, again, to advocate that we ban peanuts, but just that something be standardized amongst the schools, and that we don't expect that out of the blue peanut butter sandwiches get distributed to hundreds of students and sent all around the school.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cole.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Roswick, I know I got a lot of feedback about this when it was first announced at the beginning of the school year, and I don't know that we've addressed it publicly. Can you speak to Mr. Cole's concerns specifically around, on days that we don't have a normal calendar within the school, a normal schedule, what the expectation and the policy is, or what we might need to do to maybe shift that if we're just offering peanut butter sandwiches to kids who don't need it?
Thank you, Mr. Watson. I would, I, is, is, okay, Brett's not here today, I, it's probably one that we would have her kind of address in, in more detail, I think we weren't necessarily ready for that question from that side, but I do know that, that it may be something that Mr. Myers maybe you speak to on food allergy, like is what we do, I, I don't mean to throw you, but I think you have some knowledge of that, and it might help on, on just overall what we do for that kind of food allergy on a regular basis.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Roswick, yeah, so, I would, I would, I would hope that when we have these, these allergy situations, that, that families have been able to work with the school-based team to conduct an S-team and then develop a 504 plan, that's
That's the, that's the surest way to ensure that an individual student is going to get those needed accommodations, even as it relates to a, to a health concern. We've really moved in the last probably three years away from the, the old model of using a, a health plan and really trying to ratify it around something much more formal like a, like a 504 plan so that we can have those individualized, individualized accommodations for students. So, you know, hopefully, if those pieces are in place, we'd be able to avoid something like the example given tonight where an entire classroom's given that peanut butter sandwich. Obviously, the student with a peanut allergy cannot eat that peanut butter sandwich, and it sounds like it's even more extreme than that, right? So I would encourage any family to work with their school-based team to develop an appropriate 504 to ensure that we have accommodations in place. Thank you. I, I think it would be good for Brett to send out something to the Board with detailing that, especially on off-schedule days, because again, I know I've got a lot of questions about it. I don't know if the rest of you all did from your district, but from families who just have concern about that, and it better, better prepare us to be able to help them in that moment. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. All right, so having moved through the agenda, no more public forum, correct, Ms. Cottney? All right, okay, meeting is adjourned.